Call to order the regular Commissioners Court meeting, which is today, again Tuesday, September the 12th, 2023. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center, 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. We're very pleased today to have with us two distinguished ministers here. One, I always stand by, Ms. Pastor Mike McMahon, and then we have Father Stuart Smith of the Good Shepherd Anglican Church, who's here today to do the invocation. So, Father Smith.
And before we pray, since yesterday was the 22nd anniversary of the 9/11 attacks, we want to give a moment of silence for gratitude and remembrance of those who ran toward danger, all of the first responders who died and risked their lives in that horrible event. Now let us pray. Father, we thank you for the gift of this day, for all your good and precious gifts, the gift of freedom, the gift of a godly heritage in this nation, in this state, in this county, in this city, for all the ways in which you've crowned our life with your forbearance and forgiveness and love. We thank you for the institutions of government, and especially this day for the County Commissioners Court. Pray that you would give each of them gifts of wisdom, forbearance, hope for a better future, strength to meet the challenges ahead, keep them true to you, Lord, and true to us, and may we show them the respect due all in authority under Jesus Christ, our Lord. And we pray in his name. Amen.
Amen. But please join me in the pledge of the United States.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the pledge to the great state of Texas, honored under Texas law.
Our pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Thank you. And the first thing that we have, the next thing on the agenda is the special presentations. And the first thing is to present a proclamation declaring September the 17th through the 23rd Constitution Week. Do we have anybody here that's from here? I see, ah, Ms. Margaret Cook, of course. And look how many medals she's got. She makes Noriega look like a private, doesn't she? Margaret, I'm gonna let you read this constitution. How about that? And then we'll all come down and take a picture with you after you read it. How about that?
Thank you, Freddie.
You wanna use the microphone, I think, Margaret, so everybody can hear you?
Thank you. There you go. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2023, marks the 236th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Therefore, I, Ron Massengale, Judge of Hood County, along with all the members of Hood County Commissioners Court, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23 as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Signed by the Commissioners Court and the Judge Massengale.
We also would like to invite all of you to come to the courthouse in front of the flagpoles on Sunday afternoon at 2:45. At 3 o'clock, we will be ringing bells, and we'll be joining all the other Daughters of American Revolution across the nation to celebrate our Constitution. Sunday is Constitution Day, and we hope you bring your family. If you're unable to come, please get your own bells and ring them loud outside. Have your church bells ring, and encourage your churches to do something to commemorate and celebrate our great Constitution.
You want a second?
I have nothing to say.
You have nothing to say?
I have a shout-out.
How many years have you all been doing this?
We re- every year, everyone else. Every year.
Every year. For a long period of time.
We all do a great job. It's a worthwhile project, so thank y'all again. The next item on the special presentation is a presentation of highlights and updates from Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Services by District Extension Administrator Dr. Donald Kilm. I don't think this is Dr. Donald Kim. He's got, how are you doing here? You filling in for the good?
Yes, sir. That's what, I don't know if y'all know, but he actually got his boss's job. So, he moved up in ranking.
Oh.
Yes, sir. And so, that's why he wasn't able to make it today. He's going around all the other districts across the state and, you know, just making sure they're in line and holding to a standard that he held us in District 8. But we interviewed somebody on Friday, and we're waiting to hear back. And so, as soon as we get a hire, then I'll definitely let y'all know, and he'll be glad to meet with y'all.
Perfect.
So, start out, my name is Warner Seidel, and I'm the County Extension Agent here in Hood County for Agriculture and Natural Resources. And I've got a little bit of reading here. Probably won't go through all of it, but I will read this first paragraph. "AgriLife Extension teaches agriculture producers to adopt best management practices based on new scientific knowledge that will help them increase production, enhance sustainability, and conserve natural resources. Also, by educating the public about agriculture and food production, AgriLife Extension creates a partnership with all Texans that can improve food safety and security, reduce the prevalence of food insecurity, and improve diet and human nutrition throughout the state." So, that's basically what us at AgriLife stand for. And of course, we cover lots more. We have Hannah Hoffman. She's actually maternity leave right now. She had a baby boy in June, and so she's about to come back, and I'm ready for her to come back. It's been a little hectic at the office. But no, she's out right now. She's our Family Community Health Agent, and she's been doing great stuff here, and, like I said, ready for her to get back. So, what Donald would go through is, he would cover all of District 8 at the beginning, and so contacts for livestock and forage producers was 58,114 clientele throughout the 21 counties. Wildlife education, 8,342 total clientele. And then wild pigs continue to be a huge pest without the district, and I've seen it here in Hood County, and they're very prevalent. And throughout 27 events, we had total contacts for 15,518. And then crops and crops, water, and applicator trainings. There's 15 counties that had 87,000 total clientele involved in those programming. Water quality, 18 counties conducted events and involved over 17,449 individuals. District 8 has 10,638 certificates of private applicator or commercial and structural applicators within the district. And so, that comes out to being 93,987, 728 wage-based that benefits from certification provided by Extension. And so, that's what we offer, continuing education credits. And those applicators, they work with us, and we offer them those programs that they can continue to, you know, purchase herbicides or your structural applicators or your pest applicators. Horticulture is huge here in Hood County and also in District 8. And so, there's 15 Master Gardener chapters with 700-plus members, and these members contributed 50,000-plus hours back to Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service. The total horticulture contacts in 21, we're still back on numbers, were 57,582. Ag literacy was identified as a major issue, and that's activities featured unbiased research-based information concerning the importance and appreciation of vital role agriculture plays in daily lives, and that included 35,332 adults and youth participation. Y'all have the handout up there, but I'll go over the commodity values as a whole. So, estimated value, including other beef, milk, hay, feed corn, and boilers, is north of $2 billion. And that's huge here in District 8. And the economic impact, that's also north of $4 billion with those. So, getting into Hood County, so since I've been here, February, we've hosted a couple of events. One of those is Cross Timbers Land Symposium, and this was held in Stevensville and had a couple of Hood County residents come and learn about land management. And in total, we have 43 landowners and over 22,000 acres covered in that region from the participants there. And education was provided on multiple land management topics such as native grasses, herbicide application, wildlife, and pasture rotation, that provided an economic impact of $116,228. And so, that's huge just by one program. And then we had a Hood County Master Gardeners, and our Master Gardeners, they stay active in the county, and they're doing a great job, and I'm glad they get to represent our office. And we actually had an intern class come through this summer, and there was 22 members, and they were provided 60 hours of education from A&amp;M Specialists and us County Extension Agents. And then one of my first programs I held by myself up here was Long Care and Management, and it was three hours, and we had a total participation of 19 individuals there, and the economic impact was just under $5,000. And we covered everything from water usage to, you know, finding the right grass for your yard and soil types. Family Consumer Sciences, this is Hannah's field here. So, Childcare Conference 2022, Central Texas Early Childhood Education Conference provided eight clock hours to 82 early childhood professionals in Stevensville. And they're kind of like us. They had a bunch of individuals come from Hood County, and they had a central meeting, and they provided that high-quality education that is required of those professions. And then she did Walk Across Texas. I know a few of y'all are involved in Walk Across Texas, and she had 25 participants that make up four teams, and the participants documented just under 5,105 miles walked, with each participant walking an average of 204 miles. And that's an eight-week program, and that, you know, just gets people out and about and just walking and being healthy. And then she walked through Texas history, four weeks, and there's 18 participants that made up five teams, and they recorded just over 1,645 miles. And so, 4-H, so the cream of the crop here, this is my favorite part of the job. I love 4-H, being able to develop these youth here in the county. It's been an awesome achievement that what they've done so far. So, 4-H membership, we had 142 enrolled members, and that's 13 Clover kids, so kindergarten through second grade, just under eight years old. They're not able to be in 4-H yet, but they're still being active in the county. And then 37 screen volunteers and 11 clubs throughout the county. So, livestock projects, we had 96 livestock entries in the Hood County Livestock Show and 42 sales slots from 45 4-H members. And then 13 4-H members continue to exhibit at various major livestock shows, and that's through San Antonio, Houston, and all those majors, and had a couple win $10,000 scholarships. And they're just continuing their education by, you know, being able to show in this program. Hood County Family Living at the Hood County Junior Livestock Show, Hood County had 104 Family Living entries from 32 4-H members. And there was one family that walked in, and I think they pulled a trailer load full of, you know, arts and crafts and foods and everything, and I said, "Well, if you're gonna throw anything away, make sure it goes into my mouth, because I'll definitely take it home with me." And they did an outstanding job, and Hannah's really grown that contest. And then 4-H contests, Hood County 4-H members competing in varying contests at county, district, and state levels, all through food and nutrition, clothing and textiles, photography, livestock skillathon, public speaking, horse show, record books, roundup, Serge Leadership Lab, shooting sports, consumer decision-making, and dog show. Throughout the 4-H show and contest season, Hood County 4-H has received more than $40,000 in scholarships. And that's why I'm here. I'm trying to get these kids able to continue their education at, you know, a lower cost, and they actually earn that money, and they're able to go to school through this program. And then Creekland Enrichment, that's also one of my favorite parts. We go to different campuses throughout Granbury, and usually on Tuesdays, we go to talk to third graders and below. And in '22 to '23, we had opportunity to teach 1,006 Hood County students, and that was everything through agriculture, natural resources, and family and community health. And yep, that's about it. And I know Donald said that he wishes he was here, but he says there's gonna be a good replacement filling his shoes, and he's excited to meet y'all. So, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Well, I think y'all do a good job, you and Hannah. All of y'all do a great job up there, and y'all are a great asset to Hood County. So, thank you for that report. So, very good. The next item is the presentation to recognize Sean McGuire and Tyler Brown.
Judge Commissioners, the reason we got this on the special presentations is for about three years now, we've been working on getting this new radio system done, and we finally got it done. It went live here a couple of weeks ago, so it's up and running, and it's gonna end up being better than I ever dreamed of it being. But we couldn't have got it done without Sean and Tyler, and they were working so hard behind the scenes, long hours, weekends, everything, trying to get it done, keep it going, motivating the tower people, the Harris people, all of that. But we finally got it all done with their help, and we couldn't have done it without their help. So, we've got them two plaques, one each, in recognition of your dedication, hard work, and commitment to the trunking system project. So, Sean.
Right.
It takes a team to get everything done, and I've got a fantastic team. So, with their help, we got that rolling. So, thank you for this time.
Good deal. Thank you, Sheriff. Y'all did a great job. Okay. Ms. Wilber, no service awards today? No service awards. Okay. So, that brings us down to item number six, which are the citizens' comments at large, the open-mic deal. And we got some that'd be limited to three minutes per person here on your comments. And the first person is Tina Brown. Ms.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Gosh, it's good to be back from vacation. Not so sure I'm happy to be here. I missed a couple of meetings, but I believe Kevin called this court a circus at the last meeting, and someone also said something about we need better monkeys. I'm here this morning to tell you I'm constantly amazed and disappointed in the elected officials in this county, including some of you. We currently have some elected officials in this county praising another elected official for not only breaking the rules set forth with her position, but also for breaking the trust of many of our citizens. And now, we also have a county attorney who wants to end public comments at these meetings. Really? So, at the last meeting, Nanette, you put on item number two on the agenda about Clint Head. You let people talk from 1713 to 3234, a little over 15 minutes, before you spoke up and said the agenda item had nothing to do with what they were talking about. You said the item was actually about a violation of a code of conduct where he spoke up from his chair during court a couple of times, once recently, and the other time was way back in April. First off, if he did something against the code of conduct in April, why wasn't it handled then? Why are you bringing it up now? To embarrass him? To disrespect him? Second, why did you let the speakers continue to speak about something that was not on the agenda for 15 minutes? To embarrass him or to disrespect him? It was disgusting, and I am appalled, but I know you don't care because you feel that you are better than us because you are elected. Then you spoke about these instances and rambled on and on. The context of what you just said was not, was part, which was continuing the conversation that you said was not part of the agenda item. You should have stated the violation and moved on, but no, you read his words almost verbatim to the court. Why? Again, to embarrass him or disrespect him? While I'm on the subject of code of conduct, I am absolutely stunned that you, as elected officials, have no code of conduct to follow. Some of you believe you have the right to speak out against, embarrass, and disrespect department heads, employees, and citizens just because you are elected. I happen to believe that since you are elected, you should be held to a higher standard, or at the very least, the same standard. But you seem to think it's okay for the county clerk to grab the microphone during court and call a citizen a liar because she's elected? You seem to think it's okay for the Republican chair to be called out of order during court and refuse to sit or leave because he's elected? This is only a couple of examples of what I've seen recently. I could go on and on about things elected officials in this county have done, but I'm afraid there just isn't enough time. Lastly, in my opinion, Clint Head very much exercised reasonable patience and discretion in the matters you brought to this court. In my opinion, he deserves a public apology from this court and from Nanette personally because it's obvious that her intentions are personal, for whatever reason, I don't know, and she wants him gone. One last thing, isn't it a violation?
You're out of order. Go ahead.
Isn't it a violation of the Open Meetings Act for three or more of you to be at the same function without posting a notice ahead of time? Last night was the second time I am aware of just recently happening. I'll be looking into that.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sharon Schielander.
Didn't notice, but the time had expired. I believe I get about four minutes. So, what I heard that Nanette Samuelson did in the last meeting was bring forth a complaint of ethics conduct, or code of conduct, against a county employee, which had broken that conduct a couple of times. And I don't know if other people have ever worked for somebody as a supervisor, but that is a supervisor's job. That if an employee is breaking rules, or the code of conduct, or anything else, then it is the responsibility of that supervisor to bring it to attention. I understand that this person was given an opportunity to go into an executive meeting or something outside of the public sight and refused to do so. So, being embarrassed or whatever was his choice, that he came forth and decided to go into closed doors. So, that's pretty much that. I wanted to say one more thing. I'm asking Jack Wilson, who's my commissioner, there's a tree dying on G Road where the guy built the big mound of dirt, and that, and he's dropping big leaves. The tree's fixing to fall into the road, and I would like for you to have somebody come out there and take a look at it and see if you can...
It's already been addressed.
Huh?
It's already been addressed.
Already been addressed. Good, because it's about to fall on the road. Thank you.
Okay. The next speaker is David Ferris.
Good morning. I'm going to avoid most of the previous topics. I just wanted to talk a little bit about thoughts on the tax rates, things of those natures that have gone on the past couple of meetings. In the past meetings, there's been a lot of discussion about what the tax rate should be. Should it not be lower? Is it a decrease? Well, maybe it's a slight decrease. But that doesn't really take into account the explosive growth in the assessments of the taxes for each residence over the past three or four, three years or so that I've even been living here. Over the past three years, my taxes have gone up, even from 30 to 40%. I've been notified that they're gonna go up about another 10% for next year. So, changing a minute amount on the tax rate really does nothing. Okay? The real problem are the assessment rates exploding. And now, this is a real estate bubble type issue. I mean, there have been discussions here about an upcoming major recession, and there are a lot of people that really think there will be a major deflation of the real estate. I sure hope that the assessment department is as aggressive at lowering the rates when that happens as they have been at raising them. I also, I just want to touch on one other comment that I thought was pretty outrageous. I went back to look for it, I couldn't find it, so I'll paraphrase it. It was like, the assessment increase for users in this, or for residents in this county is a good thing for the taxpayers. Property is more valuable. I have never known anybody that's gone to the tax office to say, "Please raise my assessment rate." All right? And the last thing, the last thing is, there was almost a million dollars in shortfalls of people not paying the taxes last year. There was concern about how this would affect the county. Something like 85 homes are on the docket, were on the docket or are to be auctioned. There is no concern for what caused that. I want to tell you right now, it's the explosion of the rates. It's not that people don't want to pay their taxes. And if they don't have relief, I'll tell you right now, I'll bet it's gonna be 2 million next year, maybe 3, because everybody borrowed what they could to pay this year. And if you do get the recession, you're looking at major problems down the road, and you shouldn't be looking at where to hide money. You should be looking at where to do the fact. Thank you.
Next speaker is Elizabeth Mercer.
I'm here to ask all of you to create a code of conduct and make it be similar in my opinion to mine. Sorry, can you hear me now? I'm here to... It's green. Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry. I hope you're fine.
You want to reset her time, please?
Thank you. So I don't disagree with having a code of conduct. I have 40 years of corporate experience. I've never worked anywhere where you didn't have one. Period. The end. I have deep issues with the allegations against the head of development, which if it's ever back on the agenda, will be addressed. But in the meantime, you all should have a code of conduct, and it should mirror what you expect of everyone else. And here is why. When I'm in public, I expect everyone to be polite. Mr. Eagle, you and I disagree on everything. My husband deeply resents what you did at the waterboard, very much so, because he feels like you threatened our way of life. And yet, when we met you at the HEB this weekend, he shook your hand and was polite, because that's how people behave. So my expectation is... And Nanette, when you and I were at the upper Trinity groundwater board, when I was testifying for Mike Massey, because as far as I'm concerned, he's the only champion for normal people that's even on that waterboard, you and I had a conversation, and I took humbrage with your tone. So I looked at you, and I said, "I'm not stupid." And I said that to you, because whether you meant it or not, I felt you were being condescending. And you said, "Oh, I didn't mean that." And I said, "Okay." And then we chatted, because that's what adults do. As far as the issues with Mr. Head, no one could have been angrier with him than me. Nobody. Not even Shannon Ryan. I was furious, and he and I had words. And you know what? That man took care of Hood County. He did his job, and I was wrong. And he was right. And he showed me the statute, and I read it, and I thought about it, and I talked about it. And I apologized to him, because I told him to his face he was stupid. And guess what? He isn't. He never intimidated me. He never made me feel bad. And he actually didn't act awful, because we're adults. So I'm asking you to do what your employer, because that's me, and every person behind me, and every person in this county has a right to expect from you that you actually behave exactly the way you're demanding the regular employees do. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, Fay Landem.
I read that the case against Steve Biggers brought against Judge Massengill in federal court was dismissed. And I pray the ruling will remind folks to behave with decorum when they're speaking in this courtroom. It is a privilege we have in America that few citizens in other countries share, and probably citizens in other states and citizens or counties share. Also, I read somewhere that our county attorney would like to do away with the open mic at these meetings. I hope this never happens. He said, I believe, "We should track each of you down and individually express our opinions, our suggestions, our demands, and our frustrations." In my opinion, a terrible suggestion. If I have an issue, I want to express it to all of you, as I'm doing so today. And I appreciate the ability you have given to the citizens of Hood County to do so. I know you might get frustrated. And sometimes I notice that many times some of you are not looking at the speaker while they're speaking. But I do think you owe them the courtesy of at least looking at them. At least looking at their way. It's not always easy standing up and speaking before you. I don't know what you might be thinking about, but at least look at us when we're speaking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Means.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, and members in attendance today. Special ladies from the DAR, we certainly appreciate the Constitution and our system of government that we have in the United States. For those of you that aren't familiar, I'm a commercial pilot and a small business owner and so forth. And I'm very much used to standards, very much used to standards. We have to follow probably the strictest code of conduct that there is in the flying world. There is no tighter regulation industry in the world than the aviation world. But getting back to what the foundation of the United States was, John Adams told us that this Constitution was prepared for a moral and religious people. And it is wholly unfit to the government of any other. Now, with that in mind, I'd like to point out scripture here from Luke 6:43. And keep in mind, this is read. This means that Jesus was speaking here. "No good tree bears bad fruit, nor does a bad tree bear good fruit. Each tree is recognized by its own fruit. People do not pick figs from thorn bushes or grapes from briars. The good man brings good things out of the goods stored up in his heart, and the evil man brings up evil things stored in his heart. For out of the overflow of the heart, the mouth speaks." Now, I pray that each and every one of you, as you make your decisions today, understand that this is the people's money that you're... This is the people's rights that you are elected to defend, not a particular mob or group or whatever like that. And Commissioner Eagle, I specifically thank you for standing up and following the Constitution again and again and again. And that is... We're coming up on that anniversary for that. And Nanette, likewise. And also, Commissioner Andrews, you've many times have stood up for constitutional principles here. So I very much appreciate each and every one of you. And I've... Jack, Mr. Wilson, and Commissioner Wilson, I have spoken with you many times about it. And I appreciate your efforts in the Second Amendment area in particular. So with that, I have nothing further to say. And I just pray that you carefully consider each one of these things as you make decisions today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Zach Maxwell.
Good morning. Thank you. Today, I confirmed myself with Matt Mills. And he did confirm that he did reach out to the Commissioners' Court to let them know that... His disdain, and I read his words. And I'm empathetic. I really do appreciate and I value his comments. Though I don't agree with them, I value them, because there is a problem that we have. The problem that we have is morale. The problem is, is that the folks that we've elected to lead us aren't doing a very good job at keeping up the morale. If you would think that this county and the county employees have good morale right now, I'd respectfully and humbly disagree with you. When I was at Baylor University in Air Force ROTC, for a good portion of that time, I was at the top of my class. And one of the reasons for that is I think I can attribute to a lot of the leadership training that I received. And at the very top of that is how you treat your people. And one key function of that is whenever you see somebody that is in your team that is not performing right, that's not doing well, then you admonish in private and praise in public, because that's how you get people to respect you. That's how you get people to follow you, and that's how you lead. And it... And it's just the right thing to do, because we all make mistakes. And I know for one, of all the mistakes I've made, I surely don't want them aired out in the public, and neither do any of you. No one wants that. I will tell you this. Clint Head is somebody that is a personal friend of mine and somebody that I personally admire and look up to as a mentor, and is somebody in Hood County that everyone should look up to and see as a shining example of what a public servant and a leader is. And what transpired over the last week, or the last... at the last meeting, I don't think that that was proper. And to say that you were just following protocol, I think the problem with public comment and things like that is that we have the county clerk chiming in and jumping in and calling people names. We have other people chiming in and calling people names. I think that if we were to provide a better standard of which... and a better foundation for which people can stand on, I think that we would have a much better culture to contribute to, rather than being in everybody's guns. So thank you for your time, and I really hope that all of you heard those words.
Thank you.
Brad Yarborough.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you for the time to speak. A lot of people are talking about code of conduct, and they're right. You guys should have some kind of code. Using your office, Nanette, to destroy... Using your political office to destroy someone's campaign and their character is just wrong. The evidence showed that he did nothing wrong. You did no investigation whatsoever on it. And all you're doing is trying to embarrass the man and derail his election bid. And that should be in a violation. And a lot of you are guilty of this. You had Katie Lang dang near breaking her neck grabbing a microphone to call me a liar in a meeting in July. And then the biggest code of violation I would see would be at a school board meeting recently with Dave Eagle. And he was saying that Karen Lowery should molest children. That would show them. What kind of comment is that? Condoning molesting a child? Being a joke or anything should never be said, especially in public, Mr. Eagle. All kinds are wrong. All kinds of code of violations there. You should not be saying things like that, especially in public, in... at a school board meeting. And then when the people in front of you called you out on it, you thanked them and smiled. How wrong is that? And I too, Judge, would like to thank you on your victory on your... Steve Biggers versus Ron Massengill. Congratulations. That got dismissed with prejudice, which means he can't come after you again for it. Steve Biggers is famous for coming up here and saying God has a way of humbling people. And I think God has humbled him with that ruling. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Katie Lang.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. I just want to say that, you know, when people come up here and speak, they should be an adult about it, like was commented earlier. And if you're going to say something that's not true, you know, don't say anything at all. Just if you have something... An allegation or something, bring facts, show paperwork. If you have something you needed to talk to the elected official about, talk to them before court. See if you can get it resolved. Act like an adult. Talk your issues out before you bring it up in court. Otherwise, you're just... This is just one show after another after another, and it needs to stop. Thank you.
Okay, next. Sandra Head.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Today, I stand before you to address a matter that weighs heavily on the reputation of our beloved Hood County. It is with a heavy heart that I acknowledge the not-so-good reputation that we have gained across the state. The vile and divisive behavior displayed by some individuals has brought shame upon our community. The meanness and hostility exhibited by certain individuals at all local government public meetings are nothing short of astonishing. It is disheartening to witness such behavior, especially when it is done under the guise of Christianity. Should we allow this to become the norm in our community? We must come together and reject the divisive behavior that tarnishes our reputation. Let's strive... Let us strive for a Hood County that is known for its compassion, understanding, and open-mindedness. It is only through unity and commitment to civil discourse that we can overcome these challenges and create a brighter future for generations to come. You want to put on the agenda Mr. Head's role as Director of Development when he has been doing development on the private side and government side his entire adult life. You want him to be your enforcer of these regulations when it benefits you, then violate him when he will not enforce something that he knows is not legal. The only time he has ever been harsh in this court was putting him in a no-win situation for doing his job and blaming him for things he only said to you what was the law. You let him take the hits for you, but you then hang him out to dry when you don't want to look like the bad person to a constituent you are showing favor to. He does not show favor. Everyone is treated the same, and for that, you call him harsh. Last week, you questioned his code of conduct, but have you questioned your own code of conduct? The county clerk was mentioned for doing the exact same thing, but Commissioner Too justified it as stating that she is an elected official and does not work for the court. You forget that she is the citizen's employee, and her paycheck does say Hood County at the top. And she does the same thing to an actual taxpaying citizen and violates that code of conduct. Then at the very end of the agenda item, the Commissioner of Precinct Four violated that code of conduct for telling a citizen in the audience that he is out of line. Maybe someone needs a special meeting to discuss the role of commissioners so that they can learn that they are not the county judge and they do not run this court. The county judge is the only person that can tell someone that they are out of line in contempt or anything. So at that meeting, to discuss the role of one department and the code of conduct, it is very telling that the Commissioners discuss this issue, do not know their own rule, and do not follow the code of conduct. It is time that some of you take a look in the mirror and check yourselves, learn your own job, because there are attorney general opinions that tell you that your job is not to manage or micromanage any department. You want to be a leader, then lead by example, because all that I see that you show no rules apply to you, but you will try to use those rules to drag anyone you have an agenda against through the mud. Swap offices with the Director of Development for just one day, because I promise you, he can do your job, but you cannot do his, and you dang sure can't do it alone.[1647.34]
Thank you.
You're, you pass? Okay. That's all of the citizens' comment at large. I've got so many papers. Is anybody signed up?
We have.
Well, that's an agenda item. Okay. Okay, so the first item under the miscellaneous business is to discuss and take appropriate action to allow the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Disaster Assessment and Recovery to utilize Hood County Development's vacant office in Annex III. There will be no cost to the county besides providing office space. Commissioner?
The AgriLife reached out and are asking to place the AgriLife Extension Disaster Assessment Recovery, you know, individual for District Eight. District Eight encompasses 21 counties in our area, and the office that's available in Annex III would be a perfect fit for them. They can, they'll be basically in the center of the 21 counties they'll be working with, and that's not going to be any cost to the county.
Can I interrupt you for a second? There was a speaker, Stacy Martin, that wanted to speak in the open comments that you missed. I tried to tell you, but you didn't hear me.
She's actually wanting to speak. She's on J D. Thursday. She just didn't write that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I didn't think I'd missed you. All right, I got you down. Ten. Okay. Is there any other further discussion about allowing the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife to use the vacant building in Annex III? If not, do I hear a motion?
As I move that we approve and allow the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Disaster Assessment and Recovery to utilize the vacant office in Annex III with no cost to the county besides providing the office space.
I hear a second.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to let the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Disaster Assessment and Recovery utilize the Hood County's Development's vacant office in Annex III, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five-zero. Give the good news to Mr. Kim, will you please? You got, thank y'all. That should, all of y'all be in the same building there, won't you?
Yeah, we neighbors.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you. Okay, item number two. Consider and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign the interlocal cooperation contract between Hood County Sheriff's Office and Pecan Valley MHR, MHMR region to provide payment for transportation services for individuals experiencing a mental health crisis event. Sheriff Deeds.
This is the same contract that we've had for many years that pays for, the way it's worked out best for us in Hood County is to pay for the mileage. In other counties, they do it different, but it works out really well with us doing it by the mileage. So, they give us $20,000 at the start of September or when it passes in court to pay for the mileage that goes into the transport of the metals throughout the course of the year. And one of my employees takes care of the vouchers, along with the transport, fills them out, gets them turned in right away to the Pecan Valley, and they keep up with that, and it's been working really well. So, unless there's any other questions, I'd ask that you approve the, the grant money from Pecan Valley.
Okay. Well, Coke Beatty does a great job, and your office does a great job, and it's worked well for, I know the last five that I've been here, but I know from talking to the previous judges, it's worked very, very well without any hitches, and so I think that it should be approved too. Is there any further discussion? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve and authorize the county judge to sign the interlocal cooperation contract with Hood County Sheriff's Office and Pecan Valley MHMR region to provide payment for transportation services for individuals experiencing a mental health crisis event.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to authorize the county judge to sign the interlocal cooperation contract between Hood County Sheriff's Office and Pecan Valley, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five-zero. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, item number three. Discuss and take appropriate action to allow the Board of Granberry Arts Alliance to use the first floor hallways of the historical courthouse on Friday, March 29, 2024, from 12:00 noon to 10:00 p.m., and on Saturday, March 30, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the Dan and Judy Coats Art Show. We have three speakers that are signed up to speak on this important item, and the first one is Teresa Houston.
We would like to speak in sequence as we're sitting here.
Okay, all right. Well, if y'all are in agreement, who am I to oppose that? So, Scott Young.
Judge Massengill, Commissioners, my name is Scott Young. I'm a board, a member of the Board of Directors of the Granberry Arts Alliance. We're here in support of this item number three, and I'd like to introduce Teresa Houston, the President of the Granberry Arts Alliance.
Good morning, and thank you for letting our organization speak to you all today. My name is Teresa Houston, and I'm currently the President of Granberry Arts Alliance. I have been part of this organization since 2019, when I retired from teaching art in Granberry for 29 years. The Granberry Arts Alliance is a 501(c)(3) organization that raises money to support the various arts in our community. We currently have 11 board members and over 100 members that support and volunteer through our organization. Now that our city has been awarded the prestigious designation of an arts and cultural district, it's very important that we have the city, the county, and the community's support for our future projects. We are the main fundraising art organization within the city that can and will help maintain this designation. We rely on fundraisers and donations for our causes. For example, in June, our Dinner in White gave us the ability to share proceeds in the amount of $6,000 with the Shanley Organization to help fund the sculpture of Dan Coats to begin their envisioned Sculpture Walk. We have partnered with Wine Walk, Harvest Moon Festival, and the Rock and Blues Festival as well for fundraising opportunities. As our organization grows monetarily, we can also apply for grants that are available through the Texas Commission of the Arts and search for other grants opportunities as, as well. Two years ago, the Dan and Judy Coats Western Art Show was conceived for this as quintennial celebration. Since that time, we have vowed to build and continue this show in their name. That is why we are seeking your help today. We believe this event will bring many to our town to experience everything we have to offer in and around our historic square. We also understand that there will be some cost for deputy, for security, and we are willing to take that on as well. An investment in art and culture can yield a lot of economic activity that, of course, leads to tax revenue for our city and county. Thank you so much for your time, and I would like to introduce our other board member, Courtney Courts-Blackman.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. I am here to humbly request your gracious consideration in permitting, permitting the Granberry Arts Alliance to host the third annual Dan and Judy Coats Memorial Art Show in remembrance of my beloved parents in the bottom-floor lobby of the Hood County Courthouse. We had the pleasure of hosting this show in 2021 at Celebration Hall, and it was a great success. Unfortunately, due to the new craft brewery that's going in there, Celebration Hall is no longer an option for us, and last year we had to postpone the art show altogether. This year, we were able to hold the art show in the chapel behind the Linden Center in conjunction with the Dinner in White. Yet it did not garner the same attendance as expected. We believe that the location of the event was the main factor for this, which is why we are hoping to hold the show in the courthouse this March 29th and 30th. The Granberry Arts Alliance board members will be present to ensure the safety of the art and artifacts in the courthouse museum. Being on the square is of utmost importance for the success of our show. I would like to take this opportunity to remind you that the success of the show directly benefits the art community in Granberry. The Granberry Arts Alliance receives a portion of the sales from this event, which then go toward funding art organizations in our town. It is with immense pride that I honor my parents' legacy and support the arts in Hood County, and I thank you all very much for your thoughtful consideration in this matter.
Thank you. I believe that's all I have for item number three. Am I correct? Okay, good. Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Well, I just wanted to double-check on the covering, the, it's $800 for the 16 hours, so you're going to cover that. And then Constable Chad Jordan's office has graciously volunteered to lock and unlock the building for you on Friday night and Saturday morning. So he'll, his, someone from his office will be there. So, thank you. Appreciate that.
Sheriff, I don't, I mean, have y'all decided on that, about whether your deputies will be doing that? I guess y'all can, as long as somebody's there from your office or whatever. I know that you're the one that computed the time of your off-duty police officers, off-duty deputies in that regard.
My guys do a lot of off-duty security around the county, but, so I threw that out there, and the Constable chimed in, and Scott London, Deputy Constable Scott London is going to be willing to do that, I guess, so that, that's fine with us, fine with me.
Okay, all right. Good. As long as somebody's there, that's, that's what we need with everybody else.
Be sure someone was there to unlock it for you on Saturday morning.
Yep, and he has the keys, and, and he said he'd cover it. Or Constable Jordan said he'd cover it, so.
Okay, all right. Well, we're going to hold their foot to the fire then. That's good. Okay, good. All right. Any further comment? If not, do I hear a motion?
As I move that we allow the Board of Granberry Arts Alliance to use the first floor hallways of the historical courthouse on Friday, March 29, 2024, from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Saturday, March 30, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the Dan and Judy Coats Art Show.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to allow the Board of Granberry Arts Alliance to use the first floor of the hallways of the historic courthouse on Friday, the 29th, at the designated hours, and on Saturday, March 30th, the designated hour for the Dan and Judy Coats Art Show, second by Commissioner Andrews. Is it, well?
It's kind of a tie.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five-zero. Thank y'all very much. Okay, item number four. Discuss use of the courthouse square for events as permitted by the Texas Historical Commission. This is for discussion purposes only. And we got one speaker, and that's Tina Brown.
I can sign up to speak in case I have questions or a discussion you have.
Okay. Well, our guys are, did, we have the
The letter.
The letter from Susan Teets from the, who's the antiquities expert from the Texas Historical Commission, Owen, to put up there?
Yes, sir.
Can you put it up there? This is here. You know, because of the, all of the discussion and everything else that went on with the bronze statues that we're going to get to later in the miscellaneous business to be discussed, there were a lot of questions about the numerous events that are put on by various organizations in Hood County, the city of Granberry, on the square. So while we were trying to get approval for the Bronzes and for the Heroes Memorial to get retroactive approval for it, I kept asking Ms. Teets, please, we need to know this because we have a lot of events scheduled. So she wrote this letter back to me that clearly states what y'all all can see, and that's that anything of a temporary event that not making any kind of permanent changes is allowed. So we do not have to go to the State Historical Association for anything, which is a great relief to everybody, I can tell you that. And I see a lot of people shaking their heads in agreement, and I can tell you that for sure. So, that's all I wanted to know is to let, we are good with this, and that's why. And I was really using that Granberry is the celebration capital of Texas, and we have a lot of events, and a lot of people come to Granberry, and this was really a nice letter, and she did a great job in helping us with all of that. So, that's all that, that was just a discussion that everybody can be clear on that, that events do not need approval from the State Historical Association. So, item number five. Discuss and take appropriate action to pay the Texas 21 Annual Membership
Judge?
Yes, I thought you were passing. Okay.
If you have a discussion and if I had any questions.
Oh.
So, it's great that that's up there, but
I can't, I couldn't read it back there.
Oh, okay. Can you read it there?
It's not up there now. So, basically what we can, we, this is good as long as nothing permanent has been done?
Yeah, you can't make any permanent changes
Okay, so
to the courthouse itself or anything on the lawn and up through the center of the street without approval.
Okay.
But holding events is just a week, three days, two days, an afternoon deal. So you can have an event that's of a temporary nature.
Okay, so the flags are going to be okay?
Well, they're, they're
Because they're, are not.
Well, they're standing up on a temporary basis. They don't stay around year-round.
Oh, I thought we had, we had agreed to leave the flags up all the way around and change them out for different functions.
Well, that's right. You got the U.S. flags for a period of time, and then the Texas flags for a period of time, and then joint flags of the Texas and the, and the U.S. flags alternating for a period of time, and then you've got the Casa flags that are flown for a period of time. And then you have Christmas time where you have Santa Claus up there, and nobody can mess with Santa Claus.
So all that's going to be okay?
All that's going to be okay.
So have we done a, any kind of investigation to see if anything has been permanently changed since, since the, since they redid the courthouse? Has anybody gone, you know, when they redid it, I think, I don't remember what year it was, but since then, has there been any major or any permanent changes to the courthouse? Has anybody looked into that?
Well, there, I know what you're talking about, because there are offices that have been used that I don't think got permission from the state. I don't know about that. I was trying to handle one thing at a time, and that was to get approval of the veterans' heroes out there and getting the Bronzes
I understand.
approved or disproved, and that was a real, they had to really expedite that to make a decision. So
And it's sad that
Now, that is still an open issue. That is still an open issue.
Oh, okay. I, I just wanted to
Okay.
to check. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item number four. Discuss the, item number five. Discuss and take appropriate action to pay the Texas 21 Annual Membership dues in the amount of $10,000. I think everybody here knows what Texas 21 is and what that is trying to do about the alliance here, but we have one speaker that signed up, and that's Zach Maxwell, to discuss. Yes, so Mr. Maxwell.
Hello, thank you, and I'll be brief. I just want to express my support for this agenda item. I think that, so in my time working in the legislature, I've always been a big part of, and being involved with Texas 21, and I think with everything that's been going on with transportation-wise and all the expansion growth in our state, that a coalition like this is very important to our community as we are a very fast, we're a fast-growth community. So, any support towards this would be appreciated, and if you have any questions, I'm also here for questions.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions, discussion, comment? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make that motion. I agree with Mr. Maxwell on this. I'm going to make a motion that we pass, make a pass on today on to pay the Texas 21 Annual Membership dues in the amount of $10,000.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Eagle to pay the Texas 21 Annual Membership dues in the amount of $10,000, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five-zero. Item number six. Consider and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign the following interlocal agreements for Hood County Animal Control. And we've got the city of Granberry, city of Crescent, city of Stockton Bend, city of Lepan, city of De Cordoba, and the city of Toler. And we have Sheriff Deeds, and we have Kelly McNabb up here from Animal Control to, yeah, go. Give us a handout.
So she's bringing the latest contracts.
Thank you.
We've talked with Commissioner Andrews about some of this. The, the prices, you know, we do what we have to do because we're here to serve and protect the citizens of Hood County, including Animal Control. So, these interlocal agreements are something between you guys and the cities. So whatever you want to do with the prices or, or however you want to do it is fine. The one thing that's been talked about that's constant, and unfortunately we have the cases, is the local, local rabies control authority, which we have at, at the county. So, the cities have to have So the cities have to have buy-in on that or provide their own, but other than that, they get... If they get in better... What's the word that you used, Mr. Andrews?
Enhancement of service.
Enhanced service.
Yeah, enhanced.
Then they need to pay a little extra, but that's entirely up to you. We'll do whatever we need to do based on what the court agrees upon, so.
This is basically a 2% across-the-board increase from last time, right?
It is, based on the calls that we did last year, and then 2% up. But some of the...
You don't have... Use the microphone.
Some of the fees actually went down, and then Stockton Bend did go up, and Lepan went up just a little bit, but most of the fees did go down this year.
Well, the pound that we have out here, the only pound in Hood County is the one that's... That you operate, am I right?
The animal control facility, yes.
Yeah, that's the only animal. So everybody uses that. I mean, we've heard the deal about the double taxation, and we pay this, we pay that, but everybody has to use animal control here in Hood County, and that's... Nobody can... We can't do without that, and that is run very, very well, and y'all do a great job in that, so.
Yep, so they do a fantastic job, and on the go all the time, every day, working out there at the shelter, and taking calls all across the county, so.
Yep, and all right, I'm going to charge up this hill and maybe die alone on it again. You know, yes, this is absolutely in no way any kind of a, you know, disparagement toward animal control. You guys do an excellent job out there and take care of everybody. The contention is that we're charging folks inside the city limits an additional fee for what every citizen in the county gets. If it's on this side of the city limit sign, the folks inside the city pay for animal control through their city taxes and through their county taxes. I'm not trying to take any funding away from animal control or anything else. This is just double taxation to the folks that live inside the city limits. Much the same as somebody calls 911, the sheriff's office responds inside the city limits, the same as they do outside the city limits, and don't charge individually for those calls going into the city limits. Some cities, city of Toler, has a police department now. Everything's up and running over there, and with their police department in Toler, and glad to see that, a little extra law enforcement out there on that side. But they... The city pays for that. They have an elevation of service. They have somebody right there inside city limits that responds to their 911 emergencies right away, and they pay for that. Lepan has a marshal's office, same thing, and the city of Granbury, of course, has its own police department. So they're paying for the elevation of service that's going on there, but I believe that we're double charging whenever we get into animal control. Now, their state law, and we've talked about this, state law does require that a city has a local rabies control authority who, I guess, we have that for the county, and in these contracts, we provide that for the cities. So that is, you know, something that we can contend with there, is that since that's required, and by code, it's not allowed for us to just provide a free service, I mean, there'd have to be an interlocal agreement, but fair compensation for the local rabies control. But I think that's the only thing that we need to be charging for, with the exception, and I talked to Mr. Kaufman about this a little bit, in that Granbury has a little bit different arrangement. They bring animals for disposal, dead animals that they, you know, pick up off the street to us for disposal. So, you know, that's a charge to the county, so we could split that... Split that fee up. But I think as far as, you know, calling or charging per call going into the city limits, I think it should just be the county taxes that pay for that. I don't think that the city should have an elevated price tag on that, so.
As I was reading through this, I was trying to understand. If I live on this side of the street that's in Hood County, and this side of the street that's in Toler, why is the person in Toler that's just on the other side of the street having to pay an additional tax for the same service that the person on this side of the street's getting, when they're already all paying county taxes for the same service? And y'all do a great job. My daughter just adopted a...
Yes.
I'm trying to think of his name. Adopted a dog, and, you know, they were very, very pleased with the way that went, and y'all do a great job. I'm just trying to figure out from a logic standpoint, if I live on this side of the street and I'm in Toler, and this side of the street and I'm in Hood County, why is this person having to pay a city tax and a county tax for the same service? And I just... I'm not understanding that.
Sure, and that's why this is up for... That's why this is up for discussion.
Yeah, keep it close to you, Val.
Yes, okay.
Okay, thank you.
And that is why it's up for discussion. In 2015, I was asked to bring this contract back to court, revised, updated, and that's what I did. And so it's been the court's decision to... Appelled these contracts. So this is absolutely y'all's decision, and we're going to support that.
So I've got a couple of ideas or thoughts on that. So these are... Each one of these contracts represents different numbers that are required, or you need to operate animal control. Is that true?
The numbers are broken down into boarding, euthanasia, and field calls within the cities.
So here's my observation on that. Let's say we don't renew these, but you still need the fees to pay the expenses to do what you do with these.
Right.
We're just... The only alternative we got is to raise the amount that goes to your department, and that comes out of the taxpayer's pocket anyway. So I'm kind of having trouble, and sorry, Commissioner Andrews, but...
All right.
I'm just having trouble understanding what difference it makes, which pocket it comes out of. We've still got to pay the expense that is incurred by animal control. So I don't... We've got a... We've been doing this for how many years?
Eight now, I guess. Since 2015?
Well, yes, so it was revised in 2015, but I found interlocal contracts, 2002?
Two, three, somewhere in there. It went away for a while, came back for a while.
May I offer a suggestion?
I always enjoy watching Commissioner Andrews charge this hill. I enjoy that every year, but I'm going to disagree with him on this, and that's just my thing.
May I offer a suggestion, is this is disproportionately raising the taxes on a few people rather than having it come from the total budget.
Yeah.
So it's disproportionately harming the people that happen to live in these city limits, rather than spreading the cost across everyone in Hood County.
Right, much the same as the sheriff's office, again, I'll go back to that. They'll respond to a 911 call into the city limits, and the cities don't have to pay for that individual response in there. I think it should be the same with animal control. I believe that the people inside the city limits are paying twice, taxes twice, for animal control, whereas if you live just on the other side of that magic line, you only have to pay once. And I think that that's... I think it's improper and wrong, but again, no... You guys are doing a great job, and I think that this is just a philosophical view of this. I believe that the people inside the city limits are paying twice.
If you would consider that, Commissioner Eagle, that this is disproportionately forcing the cost on those, I do agree with you that to make the animal control service whole, there has to be additional income there, but making it come from these few people doesn't seem right to me.
I appreciate that.
And again, there's a requirement in law for the local rabies control, or... Yeah, local rabies control authority, so there's a requirement there that we would still need to work an interlocal for that particular service. And of course, you know, we would need to notify city council, or, you know, mayor's, whatever is an appropriate notification there for the rabies cases that come up inside those cities. So there's something that should be worked out contractually there in an interlocal, but as far as some of the other... And then again, like I said, with Granbury, doing a little bit different deal than any of the other cities do, or even that's different than being done out in the county, so.
Well, October 1st is the start date of these contracts, correct? Are they all on October 1st? Okay, so...
And it's a yearly?
Yeah, so we have an opportunity to discuss this in some of the following agenda items where we have the budget. So may I make a motion to table this until we have a discussion on the budget and come back on the 26th?
Well, I have something to add first. You know, animal control doesn't work without having animal control that you operate. It just doesn't work at all, and that's the benefit of every person in all of Hood County to have the animal control center there. It goes to adoption, to pickup, to boarding, and everything else. If you didn't have that, you wouldn't have an animal control center. So every citizen benefits from having an animal control to pick up this and pick up those animals wherever they can be. We're talking about the past contract fee of being $2,450. Now, just what are we going to do? Are we going to keep kicking this can down here? It comes up every year, and it's the same thing, and you want to try... How many hours are we going to spend? Are we going to spend an excess of $20,000 trying to work out a $2,400 deal here, where everybody gets the benefit? I mean, come on, folks, let's start using a little bit of discretion here about moving this agenda along here. The city of Toler, the past contract fee is $2,450. You're telling me that what animal control is not worth that to the city of Toler? It's worth that, folks. We've got to have the animal control center. I just think that we have been doing this for the last eight years, it's worked well, we get national awards and national acclamations for Kelly McNabb and the wonderful job that she's doing. Let her continue to do her job. Nothing ever works out exactly correct. I wish we had just a flat tax. That would certainly benefit me rather than a graduated income tax. You just happen to fall in that, you know? Life sometimes is not exactly fair, but I just think that putting this up and working here and using departments' heads and using your time and deputies' time for $2,450 is ridiculous.
Well, you know, the city of Toler, this caused issues last year because the city of Toler chose not to sign this agreement on this very, very issue that we're talking about here. So I think that that, you know, this is an important issue. It's definitely important to the city of Toler. I'm hearing a lot about this, and I think that it's, you know, again, it's a philosophical issue that I think that we're double taxing the people that live inside the city.
And I made a motion to table until the 26th, a few minutes ago, so there's a motion on the table.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Samuelson to table the item number six. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of tabling item number six, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So I don't know how... Is it three, two? Did you vote to table?
Yeah, I'll let them table at one.
Okay, so the motion is tabled, so please spend a lot of good time and work on this problem, will you?
It's really us, Judge, it's us that need to figure it out, not... She's going to get the money.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Sheriff Kelly. Item number seven. Consider and take appropriate action to award RFQ 2023-05 Civil Engineering Services to a pool of the top-scoring vendors. Purchasing, and Commissioner Andrews.
Glenn is a little under the weather today, so we have gone through and rated the... Separating out the land surveyors and civil engineering services, and what we're wanting to do is create a pool to where any of the top four of these... On each of these ratings, that we could contract with any of the four to do a particular job.
So any other discussion or comment? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make the motion that, well, on the civil engineering, that we use the top four scored engineering companies in a pool, and that's Kimley-Horn &amp; Associates, Barrett-Hampton &amp; Brown, Teignell &amp; Perkins, Inc., and Topographic.
Okay, a motion made by Commissioner Andrews to use the top four civil engineering services as a pool of the top scores, and he just read the names that I don't have here. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Item number eight. Consider and take appropriate action to award RFQ 2023-06 Land Surveyor Services to a pool of top-scoring vendors. Again, purchasers, and Commissioner Andrews.
Yeah, same thing on that. We've scored the different surveying companies and wanted to approve the pool of the top four scores.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
Yes, sir, I'll make a motion that we approve the pool of Kimley-Horn &amp; Associates, Barrett-Hampton &amp; Brown, Topographic, and Texas Surveying, Inc.
Okay.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to award the survey... Land Surveyor Services to a pool of top-scoring vendors, as he stated. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Item number nine. Discuss House Bill 3474 pertaining to prospective jurors. We have Ms. our district clerk, since it affects her, and she's going to give us a handout, is what the state has passed. Thank you.
Good morning, how are you? All right, the past legislative... The first legislative session, say that. Passed House Bill 3474 pertaining to the jury system, actually, in the whole state. It changed... We thought at first it was going to affect our budget with the cost of the jury pay going up. However, it's not because the state's going to reimburse us, and it'll be the same amount as it's always been, that we will have to pay as accounting. There is a couple of things, the very last page of that handout is the juror donation form. Right now, we have seven organizations that have come before you to get put on this list of juror donations. We have seven right now, and if you wish to leave them the same, you can. I have several people coming every once in a while wanting to be put on this list because they receive the funds from juror's pay for their organizations. And that's left up to Commissioner's Court to decide who actually gets the money for these different organizations. We have a list of seven there now. You can change them at any time, you can add more. It's just left up to Commissioner's Court to do that. Also, the age exemption for everyone in the... I'm sorry.
I only see five. Are there seven? I just see...
One, two, three, four...
One, two, three, four, five.
Five, you're right, there's only five.
So five, okay.
I probably did that because I've had two others request me to try to put them on, that's what I was thinking of. The age exemption for permanent exemption from jury service has gone from age 70, it's now age 75. So we have several people who have already claimed they're 70, and... But now, the age has gone up to 75s.
You give them the good news?
Yes, and they're not real happy about it. I just told them not to throw it at me, throw them at your legislature. I just told them not to throw it at me, throw them at your legislature. Also, another thing that really just impacts my office is that anyone who's committed a misdemeanor theft or felony theft, I have to report those to the Secretary of State the third of each month in order to get those people's name taken off of our jury will. And our jury will is sent to the state every year. And it comprises of registered voters and anyone who holds a driver's license in the county. And that's really all I have. Our jury pay has gone up for jurors, but no impact on the county.
So that's what you tell the 70-year-olds that thought that they were gonna get out of jury services, that the rate of pay has gone up?
It has, yes.
And does that soothe their?
First day here is $20, and every day after that's 58.
Yeah, so.
So it's a considerable increase in their pay.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question. So I read in here some interaction between your office and the election administrator's office. So you guys have worked that out on?
Right, we send in all of the exemptions and deaths and things like that to our elections office.
Okay, and that age limit also changed the ability to be, and get an automatic mail-in ballot? Is what I read in here, so I guess there's some.
It probably does affect her in that way.
I guess we'll have to talk to our election administrator about how the people in the gap are gonna be, because there might be someone who's 72, who now is not eligible to get a mail-in ballot.
I'm sure that they, they may have changed something for election administrators also when they did this bill.
And what's the process if we were wanting to add some?
For, for what?
Onto this.
The donation?
Yes.
They have to come to call and get on Commissioners Court's agenda?
Okay.
And bring their organization forward and tell us, tell you what they do for the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jonah. Okay, item number 10, discuss and take appropriate action to rescind the donation of two bronze statues, Silent Prey and Black Star, to the Ken Hill Foundation in care of Jeff Ferris, Chairman of the Board. Of course, as all of you know by now, the State Historical Association denied the retroactive application about the bronze statues. And we had a big discussion about that. And so I make the motion that we rescind the donation and return the two bronze statues, Silent Prey and Black Star, to the Ken Hill Foundation in care of the Chairman of the Board. Now, we have a bunch of people here that are, several people that have come up here and want to speak about that. And of course, I have forwarded your eloquent letter, Ms. Blackman, to Jeff Ferris and ask him to please consider, these are fabulous bronze sculptures, in my opinion. And Covell Jones was a very, very well-known sculptor known all over the world and all. But we do have three speakers that have signed up for it. And the first one is Courtney Coats Blackman.
I don't know if you all planned this for me so I could speak on two different agenda items and not have to come back two days in a row. But thank you so much for hearing me out on this particular subject. I have been very interested in the generous donation by Mr. Ferris. When I saw on the agenda plans to rescind the donation made from the Ken Hill Foundation, I felt compelled to talk. I believe there is an ideal location for Silent Prey and Black Star in the city park behind City Hall. I am a member of the Shanley Park Board. The Shanley Park Board recently conducted a survey of our property. And the board members were quite surprised to discover where our boundaries in the city's property meet. Just to stray from this for a moment. The Shanley Park Board, we are currently working on turning Shanley Park into the Shanley Sculpture Garden, very similar to the Benson Sculpture Garden in Loveland, Colorado. We have been working on a, our capital campaign to raise funds for our first installation, which is a bronze sculpture of my father, done by local artist, Mr. Mike Taber. And so that's what we're currently doing. That's going to be our first installation. So with that in mind, I'm gonna continue. Jason Hodges is a new board member to the Shanley Park Board, and we are delighted to have him. He recently moved back to Granbury from Lubbock, where he was the landscape architect for all the outdoor arts installations at Texas Tech. He does outstanding work. And recently, we had the opportunity to walk the park and talk about ideas for future installations. I told him about the bronzes donated by Mr. Ferris. And I think we found the perfect spot for Silent Prey and several options for Black Star. In the location where we have, that we have chosen for Silent Prey, you would be able to see it from Houston Street. And it would be a very dramatic entrance to the city park slash Shanley Sculpture Garden, while still being on city property. Jason quickly put together a sketch showing the bronze Silent Prey in this location. I picked it up last night at 11:30, and I'm gonna show you a copy of it here in just a minute. The bronzes could be installed at city property in the park behind City Hall. And they would look like a continuation of the Shanley Sculpture Garden, but still be property of the city slash county. I am not sure if the city and the county could collaborate on this project, but it is my hope that they can, and Mr. Ferris would agree to it. It would be a shame for the citizens and visitors of Granbury to not be able to enjoy these majestic pieces of art from this well-known Granbury artist. I have known Covell for over 45 years, and he was an incredible sculptor. As Judge Massengill told you, he has been recognized all over the state in '84 and '85. The state legislature named him the official Texas State Artist of the Year. One of his bronzes is in the White House, and another one is on display at the Alamo. I understand that you have likely had plenty of feedback on this matter, but I am more than willing to help in any way I can. It is my firm belief that Granbury and Hood County should not pass up this extraordinary chance to acquire these remarkable works of art. We should not let this pass us by, as it will unlikely ever be an opportunity for us again. I am sure Ken Hill and Covell Jones would have wanted these pieces to stay in Granbury. We just need to find the right situation to make that happen. Thank you so much for your ongoing efforts in helping us retain this wonderful gift. So if you don't mind, I just want to show you the sketch. May.
Sure, sure, let's look at that.
This is on Granbury and City Hall.
Oh, yes, that's beautiful, that's beautiful. Pass it.
Jason Hodges.
From Texas, yeah, that's great. Like I said, the only thing here is that's on city property. And of course, we will do anything, but that's gonna be up to Mr. Ferris.
Mr. Ferris.
Yes, so he's gotta get the statues back, and then I'm pulling for you, you know? Okay, so I forwarded your letter to him, and I hope he considers that. Because I would, I think the sculptures are fabulous also. And I appreciate what y'all are doing on that, okay? Sir, did you sign a public participation?
I asked the question, we can see it. If it's available, go on screen, is that possible?
Well, go ahead and show it to him, yeah, you can see it.
I'll pass it around.
Okay. The, the other speaker on this is Stacy, Stacy Martin?
Hi, I'm Stacy Martin. I just want to thank you, Commissioners and Judge Massengill. I just wanted to support everything that Courtney said. I am a citizen and an artist, and on the board of many art organizations, including the Commissioners Art Commission. And we did just, we were awarded the Cultural Arts District, which was 10 years in the making to do. And this sculpture, or these sculptures from Covell, such as celebrated artist, a wonderful sculptor, would be a great benefit to our city. So if, if there was any way that you can convince Mr. Ferris to great, I mean graciously, hopefully donate the sculptures to Granbury, that would be amazing. Because it does support the Cultural Arts District. It enhances our footprint greatly, tourism. And it's a teaching moment for all of the children, adults, to celebrate the history of Granbury. So that's, that's all I wanted to say and add to Courtney's comments. But we are just very, very gracious that Mr. Ferris gave us this opportunity. And I really hope that he understands that, so, thank you.
We'll pass that along to him.
Please do.
By the way, I just want to say that we got, Mr. Ferris and I were approached by four women that were very persuasive about wanting to put them there to begin with on here, and it was very persuasive, so hopefully that he will. But we have one more person that'd like to speak, Tina Brown.
Thank you, Judge. I actually hadn't heard that of the official ruling. I just assumed that's what had happened by the wording on this.
Yes.
And it's, it's really a shame. I do hope, I love what Courtney has done, and I hope that the city will work with her and work, and hope that he will still donate it to us after all the commotion in the court when he was here. So if there's anything we can do personally, as a group, to help this along? Because it's a shame. I mean, I knew Covell too. I actually have a piece of his work at home, and it's, it's very personal to me. So he was a, he was a character. So I, I hope we can get these for us. Sculpture art is so expensive, and this is a donation. What was it like, $600,000 worth of free art?
I think it was, was it, you know, 600 or 800 for both of them, I think, eight of them?
So if there's anything any of us can do to help, please put out a notice, because this would be great. And actually, I was just in Loveland, Colorado. It's amazing Sculpture Garden. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Well, any further discussion on this? If not, like I said, what we have to do, I think it was discussed at the last meeting when there was really an uproar about putting them on. This is what started all that, to prevent them from going on the Courthouse Square. And anyway, it didn't happen, but he wanted them back. He said if, if the county did not see fit, or if it did not pass, or whatever happened, he would like the bronzes back. And I think that's only fair, because he gave them with the condition that they would go on the Courthouse Square, which was approved by this commission back in November of 2022. And then the uproar said that they were pagan. By the way, Phil Harris sent me a deal last night. I saw him at the 2019-11 deal. And he sent me a deal about what the Native Americans thought of Jesus. It is fabulous to say. One of the old chief said that Jesus must have been a Native American, because he wanted no possessions. He wanted nothing, he just wanted to give rather than to take. And that's what applied to, of course, Black Star here. That's what we were talking about when I informed him that they were gonna have to be given back. So the first step that we're gonna have to do is to return them to the Ken Hill Foundation in care of Jeff Ferris. And of course, the pieces are still at the Foundry because of the good work that Senator Birdwell did, and put me in contact with the Executive Director of the Texas Association, and took it easy, and working with Susan Teetz to really fast-track this application, to let us know one way or another. And so they didn't, I think primarily because of the size of, of the sculptures. But they are fabulous sculptures, no doubt about that, fabulous. And we will be talking to Mr. Ferris about this. But the first thing we have to do, I think, is to rescind the donation and give them to him. And then he is the sole executor and the sole trustee. And then he will make the decision about where they're going, okay? So with that, do I hear a second to my motion?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Wilson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero. Okay, item number 11, discuss and take appropriate action to reimburse the Ken Hill Foundation in care of Jeff Ferris, Chairman of the Board, the cost of the foundations for the Silent Prey bronze and the Black Star bronze. And I believe, isn't that $5,730, Jay, for both of them?
Yes.
Actually, I thought it was $6,000. I haven't gotten a clear.
I, I thought I saw the invoice, but I.
Yeah, on the document.
$5,730.
Yeah, 57 is what you sent on the.
It's almost 6,000.
Yeah.
So that's what it is. And by the way, Mr. Ferris came by yesterday. He had just, it takes a while, but the check was sent last week to the guy for the cost of the foundation. So he, he's gotten paid, so we just need to reimburse for the deal. Yeah, it says, here's the deal from Diversified Elite Construction here. There's no additional invoice, is it?
No, sir, that's only invoiced for that.
Okay.
For both, for both foundations.
Okay.
Maybe the Arts Council would like to pay that.
Well, no, well, they're gonna have, the Arts Council, if they.
They're not listening.
Well, they're gonna have to pay for probably another foundation to get them up there. But I, I, I think that we agreed, we're in the discussion that it was, is that it was only fair, I think, was the terminology that was used, that if we didn't approve the, or if the statues did not get approval, that at least we would have to reimburse the Ken Hill Foundation for the cost. So that's the deal. Do I hear a motion to reimburse?
I'd like to say something. Did you, do you have speakers? Someone signed up to talk?
Yes, Dr. Granik, please.
Thank you, Judge. And Commissioners, I think it's only fair that we reimburse. I want to congratulate Commissioner Eagle for digging up the fact that there were restrictions that did that. I wish those, he had dug that up early enough that we wouldn't be in this position where the foundations were paid for. I don't know if the foundations can be utilized if it then goes to the park or not. But I think it's reasonable that, because the error sits on the county's part for not recognizing that early enough, that we not penalize the Hill Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
I'm just having a difficult time saddling the taxpayers with $5,700. This was no fault of the taxpayers. That the county commissioners and the historical commission were not aware of this requirement of the Texas Historical Commission, that the agreement that was entered into when the courthouse was restored. That is the duty of the Historical Commission to understand what those requirements.
That is the duty of the Historical Commission to understand what those requirements are. So I have a really hard time saddling the taxpayers with the mistake that was made. I don't know if there's another way. Someone mentioned raising funds. I don't know, but there, is there another way that this could happen? I just, I'm just having a hard time saddling the taxpayers with this error.
Well, here's the deal. I knew about the restrictions on the courthouse itself. That's always, we've known that you couldn't make any permanent changes to the courthouse itself. In fact, when Mr. Ronnie Rome donated that oil painting of John Bell Hood, I went and asked the Historical Commission, could we have permission to hang it in the courthouse? And it was granted, and before we even did anything about that. So I knew about that. I just didn't know about the easement that had been granted back in 2000. When the money was used, the state gave Hood County the money to repair the courthouse, and they then extracted an agreement that the Historical Association would have the right to, as Susan Teetz stated, if you're going to make any permanent change to the courthouse, the lawn, really up through the middle of the street. Of course, that does affect the school marm that's up there, the bronze statue, or the school, I don't doubt, I don't think that was ever approved. I think that the, the trees that were planted there, I know that when I got into it, there was azaleas, I believe, that were planted around the courthouse that a bunch of people wanted to keep, but the Historical Association said, hey, that was, that was not the original look of the courthouse, and they had to dig up all of those fabulous bushes.
Crape myrtles. It was crape myrtles.
Crape myrtles. So, you know, it's a tricky deal. I've, I've written a bunch of letters saying that this was not done intentionally. We didn't do it. And like I said, it passed in November. I don't know if the state would have ever found out about it, but there was an uproar about silent, I mean, Black Star being pagan worship. That's what started all of this. And anyway, it, it ended up being that they did not, by the way, I want clarification, they did not deny the application based upon Black Star being a pagan worship sign. That's not what they did. They said it was too big and it detracted from the look of the courthouse. That's in essence what they said. But I certainly don't think that Ken Hill Foundation, it's certainly not their fault, and they certainly do give enough to this community. Like I said, last year, the Ken Hill Foundation gave close to $900,000 to 501(c)(3) organizations in Granbury and Hood County. So I think that asking Hood County to reimburse the Ken Hill Foundation $5,730,000, $5,730, when they've contributed and will in hope and all likelihood continue to make contributions like this to help our community, I think it's certainly worth doing the right thing. And the right thing, in my opinion, is reimbursing the cost that the Ken Hill Foundation paid for the foundations.
I understand what you're saying. You would have been okay going against the ruling or the laws that were set forth with the agreement with the Texas Historical Commission as long as they didn't find out. Is that what you're saying? That sounded like what you said.
That's exactly not what I'm saying.
Well, you did, you said.
I'm a lawyer, you know? I can't, you know, I can't understand it.
You said that the only reason that this is happening is because we found out about, that they found out about it, and that is not true. We should have always known and gone, lesson learned, we need to know what the requirements are and go and be in alignment with the requirements so that this doesn't happen again. We need to know what the requirements are, and we need to follow.
I'm gonna send you the letters. I gave you the copies of all the letters that I've written to Mr. Wolf, to Ms. Susan Teetz, and to everybody else, telling them that we did not know about it. Nobody knew about it in the county, as far as I knew. The city attorney didn't know about it. Nobody knew about it until we got it to the investigation phase of it.
Right.
So it's not Ken Hill's fault.
No, it is definitely not. It is, it is the, this court for not knowing what the rules were.
Well, that has nothing to do with what the motion is, and that's reimbursing the Ken Hill Foundation for the $5,730 that they've expended to put the, he was just going to give us, what, $600,000 worth of bronzes that are fabulous, that we're hoping that he will consider giving them to the Sculpture Garden? And maybe that would, would help in that regard. So thank you for your discussion on the thing, but I respectfully disagree 180.
That's what it sounded like you said. It sounded like that's what you were saying when I was listening.
Okay. All right, so I've got a motion and a second that we reimburse the Ken Hill Foundation $5,730 for the foundation cost. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Abstain.
You abstain? Okay, I guess it's four ayes and one abstention.
I hadn't said anything yet. I'm thinking.
I only heard two ayes.
Are you abstaining then?
I only heard two ayes, actually.
There were three.
Oh, okay. He said.
I take the idea, but it's not, we shouldn't put them on the hook for this.
You were very quiet with your.
What was your vote?
Yes, reimburse.
To reimburse? Okay. So what is your vote, Mr. Eagle?
I think I'll abstain too.
Okay. Two abstentions, three ayes to reimburse the $5,730. Commissioner Wilson?
Mister Three.
Okay. Item number 12. Thank you. Okay, item number 12. Consider the proposed increase in tax revenues of the proposed budgets of 3.5% and increase in revenue of $899,945, and take a record vote regarding that increase for Local Government Code, Section 111.008(c). The auditor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Now's the time. If anybody would like to come and speak about their budget, this needs to be the last time, if at all possible.
Are there any departments heads here that want to speak on behalf of their department? If not, okay. So this is not the, the right here that we have talked about on the deal. Do we need to take a record vote on this one, as it is?
If you are prepared as a court to do so, but this is not the right number.
I know it's not the right number, but it's on the agenda saying that. So do we have to take a vote on it? Take a record vote regarding the increase for the, for the code?
I noticed that too, Judge. I think this is not what we, where we currently are. I mean, thank, thank you, Becky. Things have been changing really fast, and Becky has done, worked phenomenal hours getting, now I think we have full budgets and, along with extra documents that we've received just since last Wednesday. I don't, I know, I for one have spent hours and hours digesting it, and then I got a new set of documents today. So I am not prepared to take a vote on this myself, because we just, this number's not correct. I don't know about the percentage. And it's not because Becky had, you know, we all haven't worked on it. It's just because things have changed really fast.
Yeah, and I'll second that. There's a lot of, you know, things I was looking through yesterday, and I haven't had a chance to go through everything this morning, and you may have gotten every one of them clicked off. I mean, that, that absolutely may be the case, but I'd rather make sure that we did this absolutely 100% right the first time and got it.
Just for clarification, I spent time with both Nanette and Kevin yesterday, and the judge.
Yes.
And Jack. Dave, you're next.
Yes.
Harve out some time for him.
And we, we went through a lot of it, and I, I looked through it until midnight last night, and then I got new documents at 7:45 this morning. So now I need to tick and tie those.
Those reflect what we talked about.
Yeah, I just need to tick and tie and make sure that I agree with everything. And so, I'd rather do it, I'd rather be right than rushed, so we still have, you know, three weeks.
We've only been discussing the budget since March of this year, so it's, March is when we started the first items about the budget, and I've got all of them here. March the 28th is when we discussed the budget, and that's every time, so. So you want to table number 12? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. Or do you want to?
Is that what your motion is, Commissioner Samuelson?
Mr., Commissioner Andrews is making the motion.
I'll make the motion to table.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to table item number 12. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Nay. Okay, item number 13. Consider proposed budget that was the subject of a public hearing on Tuesday, August the 22nd, 2023, for Hood County Fiscal Year 2024, including any changes as agreed, and take a record vote regarding that budget. Local Government Code 11, 111.008 and 111.009, in Tax Code, Chapter 26. Miss, I'll give you the first opportunity to speak here, Ms. Kidd.
Again, we made changes as late as 5 o'clock yesterday.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to table this one also.
Okay. We have a speaker that wants to speak on this. Ms. Brown, do you want to address this? We got a motion to table it. I'm sure we're gonna, did we get a second?
Yes.
You made a second? Okay, motion to table by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Wilson, but if you want to speak on it, please come on up.
And may I also state, I will not make any more changes to this budget. It'll have to be done in here. No more. We've got to, we have to have a line in the sand. Do you all agree?
I'm not gonna make any more changes to it.
I think that's preferable to do it where we're all present.
It's, I don't want to, so, please.
Well, I guess we'll do it at open court then, except for salaries, I guess. Okay. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Well, I was just going to speak on the fact that we're going to talk about a public, the budget that was part of the public hearing on Tuesday, the August 22nd. How many times has it been changed? How many people have a current copy? How can anybody keep up with this? Is this normal behavior?
It hasn't happened to, to answer your question, this many times in the last five years.
Okay, well, I think I have requested the budget through open records two or three times, and, and I sat through the budget hearings. I don't know why these changes are being made outside of court. Why aren't these people coming to court and asking, or why aren't y'all asking whatever's going on? So are we gonna, I guess that's just what I wanted to say. I just, I'm just having a hard time even considering this mo, this item, since it says August 22nd, because that's not the budget evidently that went out last night.
This time?
So, so the, yeah, so I'm in agreement to table this, but it's like, come on, let's get on the, let's get this done.
I agree. Thank you.
It or done.
I agree.
Okay, so we got a motion to table number 13?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Any further discussion about tabling number 13? Who made the motion? Did you do it, Kevin, again?
Yep.
Andrews did, and I seconded it.
Second, so Andrews made the motion. Commissioner Wilson seconded it to table item number 13. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, carries five zero.
Katie had a question, sir. Oh, okay.
You what?
You were leaning back in your chair and you weren't.
She couldn't hear you.
The motion passes five zero. Good. Item number 14.
Judge 14 and 15, they're going to follow the same path until you guys agree on 12 and 13. 14 and 15 are moot points, so I would suggest you table both of those.
I'll make a motion to table item 14 and 15.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to table items 14 and 15. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. So items 14 and 15 are tabled. Five zero. Okay, item number 16. Discuss and consider for approval the request from Precinct 3, Commissioner Constable's office, to change office locations from the Hood County Development with the Hood County Development Department. Come on up here, Constable. How are you doing?
I'm doing good. How are you?
Good. Okay.
I'm sorry, it was off.
Yeah, okay.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
Okay.
I guess the only thing I, I have in here, I guess this is changing offices with where you are, with Clint Head at Environmental Health, I mean, not Environmental Development, am I right?
Yes, sir.
So I guess you could even just exchange keys, can't you?
Yes.
With them, you don't even have to have the locks changed if we approve that.
Yes.
So it'd absolutely be no cost. Do you foresee any cost at all?
I don't.
There was, I think, when I was, there may be, when I was talking to Jeannie, she was suggesting that maybe there'd be a pass-through between, since Clint and Jeannie would be next to each other, that there may be a.
My employees that clock in and out at the Acton Annex, after the heat got over 100, the back door won't work. They cannot clock out in the evenings. If this switch was made between Constable Ellis and Development, we could put a door, make a door or a frame between the two offices where my admin can answer the phone and take plans and documents for Development, and it would give my people in the office the chance to use the door at, we could put a code on the door at the back where only the ones with codes could go through to the time card at the back without having to access it from outside.
Be more efficient?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comment?
And what about Judge Barrett? So you guys have that pass-through now where you can go back and forth between the Constable and the JP for when you're helping with the court there and the JP's office? So how will that work?
What?
I mean, there won't be a convenient, I think we're, to me, what it looks like is we're substituting one convenience, but then creating an inconvenience with, between you and, and the JP.
It's no inconvenience for me or my department to walk. Basically, my office is next to his now.
Right.
And instead, it would be behind his.
Without a pass-through, so we.
No, there'd be no pass-through. It's, it's the building right behind it.
I mean, but currently, you can go between, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So have you talked to Judge Barrett, Barnett, sorry, Judge Barnett?
About us not having a pass-through? No, ma'am.
About, yeah, just being available for?
I'm still available.
Okay. Okay.
It's just, it's not that far.
No, I know, I work there.
And this came about in a passing conversation.
Yeah, and thank you.
It seemed like it would be beneficial to their department, and I didn't have a problem at all going back there. There's actually room in that other office for me to lock things up a little bit more safely, so I thought it was like a mutually beneficial.
Yeah, that's what it sounded like. I just, just wanted to see if, you know, everyone who's affected is, is on board with this, and I haven't, I haven't seen anything from Stephen Barnett, so.
Okay.
Let me ask.
I can't speak for the, for the judge on this. I don't know. It, I don't know if he.
Yeah, let me ask this one thing, because I, I haven't been out there and looked at it yet. Is there a way to connect his office into Environmental Suite?
My office?
No, Clint's. If we put, if we put the Development Office there.
If he moved to my office, yes, you could put a passway that's like, there's one in between mine and the judge's office.
Right.
That's got a door and you could put one there. It seems like it would be fairly easy to put a passway there in the back or the front.
Okay, and, and just, just throwing this out there, would it, would it make sense to wall off an office that goes that way? And you stay where you are? Or are you wanting to go back there to the other office? Or, you know, I just didn't know what the options.
You mean me share with Clint?
No, no, I mean, there would be a wall there, build a wall in between, like your reception area, you walk in the door on the left. I've never been environmental.
You're spending money when we don't need to spend.
But that, I mean, we're gonna have to put a walkthrough in there anyway. Building a wall would be cheap, so.
Like cut that office in half?
No, just, just one, one portion of that, like where your reception area is right now. If you could put a wall right there inside that door and then open that up over onto the other side. Just, just a thought. I didn't.
Where would I be in this scenario? I'm not following you.
Just stay where you are. But.
I'm, I'm asking to switch offices. Anything else, I, I mean.
All right, that's, that's, that's good enough. That'll, that'll work. Okay.
So I guess if there was any consideration of creating that pass-through between Environmental and, and the new Development Office, that would be discussed later. And I do think it's a, a great option to have the Development Office more visible to the street, because I'm, I'm right there and people knock on my door and I'm sure they knock on Commissioner Wilson's door looking for that office, because it's not easy to find. It's back in the back and people can't find it. So I think it, it's a good idea to have it up, up front, actually.
Well, the only thing it hears, like you keep coming back into here, is to this, to change the offices with the Development Department. That's, that's all that's up here.
That's it.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Okay. So do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the request from Precinct Three Constable's Office to change office locations with the Hood County Development Department.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by, alright, motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the request from Precinct Three Constable's Office to change offices with the Hood County Development Department, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Constable Ellis.
Thank you.
All right. Item number seventeen. Discuss and take appropriate action to update the Hood County Mental Health Leave for Peace Officers, Jailers, Telecommunicators Policy. This update is in accordance with House Bill fourteen eighty-six. HR Director, Ms. Welber, Ms. Welber.
Good morning. You all received backup for the House Bill and also the revised policy. It's just up for the court to make that motion to approve it. This is based off of the bill that was passed. I'm required to put that in this policy. This was already a policy for peace officers.
This passed by the state, it's already gone into effect, hasn't it?
September first.
September first, so.
Yes.
Wall that's in effect. You have anything to add, Commissioner Andrews?
No, sir.
Okay.
I make a motion that we update the Hood County Mental Health Leave for Peace Officers, Jailers and Telecommunicator Policy, according to House Bill fourteen eighty-six.
Second. And motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to update the Hood County Mental Health Leave for Peace Officers, Jailers, Telecommunicators Policy, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries five zero. All right. Item number eighteen. Upper Trinity Groundwater Conservation District Status Update by Hood County Board Members of the Upper Trinity Groundwater Conservation District and the Upper Trinity Groundwater Conservation Director, and I've seen him up here. You ready to speak here? Come on up and give us an update. This is discussion only.
I'd like to. I put this on the agenda at the request of our board members. And I apologize that I apparently didn't get it in quick enough to get you up further on the agenda. And so I apologize for you having to sit through all this. I'll, I'll be quicker to the draw next time. But thank you for coming.
Ladies and gentlemen, again, I'm Doug Shaw, General Manager with the Upper Trinity Groundwater Conservation District. You know, Bob Lusk and Jared Riddles are directors, board members from Hood County here. Just wanted to update you guys on a few things. Primarily, what I wanted to talk about was a recent piece of legislation that passed and was signed by the government, Governor, Senate Bill twenty-four forty. But it also could potentially involve us, and this is a, twenty-four forty, what it did was amended Section two thirty-two, and now it requires counties to require groundwater availability certification for any subdivisions. Definitely for lots over ten. There's some potential waivers if it's less than ten lots. I've been visiting with our other three counties in our district and it looks like we're going to play a role in helping them, probably enter into an interlocal agreement to review those studies for the county, provide reports, non-binding recommendations to the county. If, if this court would like to, to discuss something like that, I'm happy to have those discussions. What I've asked the other counties to do is if the court could provide me with, you know, a couple, a couple names, maybe a member or two of the court, staff, something like that, so I could visit with all four of our counties and we could all get on the same page and lay out a process. If you're, if you're not familiar with these groundwater availability certifications, it's for, you know, primarily for subdivisions that are going in that depend on wells at every lot, which are becoming more prevalent in Hood County. Of course, they're extremely prevalent in the counties to, to your north. For example, from two thousand and ten to about two thousand and twenty, there was about fifty to seventy wells drilled per year in Hood County. Last year there was a hundred and forty. And that's largely because of these developments going in, kind of in the northern part of the county. Parker County kind of bleeding in, that their, their development styles kind of bleeding into the north part of Hood County. For example, last year there were thirteen hundred wells drilled in Parker County, about five hundred and fifty drilled in, in Wise County. So, so I do expect that number to increase. That's kind of what we're seeing. The way these studies work is, is basically they're required, the developer's required to hire an engineer or a licensed professional geoscientist to perform these studies. They basically perform some pump tests on there, do some calculations and estimate how much water level decline can be expected at the boundary of the subdivision at the end of thirty years and then maybe a hundred and fifty, two hundred foot off the boundary of the subdivision. Basically, the, it, it's a requirement to, for the developer to hire an engineer to say, yes, there is enough groundwater in this area to support this development. What we found with other counties around the state and then our, other counties in our district, that they get these studies, county staff, counties generally aren't staffed with PGs or PEs that are used to looking at groundwater studies. We are, right? I'm, I'm very proud of, of the hundred groundwater districts in the state. I've got four professional geosciences on staff. Of the hundred groundwater districts in the state, there's only one or two others that even have one PG on staff. So we've got the expertise in-house to review these. We would do some, what we would do is we would take the results, the study, we would review it, we would do some, some of our own modeling to either verify or confirm what the developer's engineer has submitted and then put together a report that's gonna have a lot more information than what you're gonna see. You're basically gonna see a form that's just got answers on it and some supporting document. We'd actually put together a report that kind of describes the, the groundwater in the area and goes into a little bit more detail and then put it in layman's terms, what the, what the results say. I, I don't think these results, what they do is, is they're beneficial for future landowners, future homeowners, right? Because a lot of folks moving out here, and what we've seen in Parker County especially, is folks moving out here, you know, they're being sold, hey, you've got a private well, no water bill, and they come out here and they have this expectation. And their expectations aren't being met, because they get in the middle of the summer and their wells, production falls way off on their well, it starts pumping sand, they can't irrigate their, their big lawn. And, and so they get kind of upset and commissioners get a lot of angry calls. We get a lot of angry calls. So what this would do would basically be able to put some information out front and say, you know, buyer beware, right? There's been a study done and this says for this type of development with this type of water use, there's ample water or, you know, in this particular subdivision, you may want to consider xeriscaping or collecting rainwater for outdoor water use, because if you intend to water an acre and a half of St. Augustine or Bermuda grass, probably not gonna, you know, be sufficient to do that every summer for the next thirty years. And so again, i- if the court is interested in having us kind of step in and play a role in this and help you guys, we could go as far as overseeing, you know, helping walking the developer and their engineer through the process. We're very familiar with it. Reviewing the, the results and then making the report back to the, back to the commissioner's court. Again, you know, there would be some cost, no cost to the county. It would be a pass-through, you know, developer would, we would probably charge a small application fee for, because obviously we're gonna incur cost as well. And, but again, no cost to the county at all. It would be a pass-through from the developer. That's the main thing I wanted to talk about. If there's any questions on that, I'm, I'm happy to answer them. The other things is just, you know, we're, I mentioned the number of wells being drilled. We are seeing, you know, I kind of thought things would slow down a little bit this year. I thought things would slow down in two thousand and twenty because of COVID. I was, that was, I was completely and totally wrong. I thought things would slow down a little bit more because of, you know, the inflated cost of homes and interest rates. They've slowed down a little bit, but not much. We're still seeing a, just a absolutely tremendous number of wells being drilled, again, mostly to the counties, two counties immediately to your north, but we are starting to see an uptick. Based on what we've seen historically in Hood County, we're seeing an uptick in activity in Hood County as well. And you guys see it, right? I mean, it's, this whole area is, the, the west, west side of the metroplex is growing like crazy. People are, you know, it's, it's fleeing the, the metropolitan areas and, and coming out to these rural areas, you know, for, for better or worse, right? But, but it is, it is, it is a lot of activity. We're seeing quite a bit of permits for the non-exempt, like public water supply wells. Some of those coming into the, the northern part of, in the Crescent area, you know, as that area begins to develop, you're gonna see a lot more groundwater produced in that area than has ever historically been pumped over there. So it's, it's going to be entering, interesting to see what happens over time. And some of that happens just over and into the Parker County line, but some of it is in, in Hood County as well, kind of off three seventy-seven and then in, in Crescent proper, so.
Rainwater.
Rainwater, that, that's one of the things these guys wanted me to mention. We've, long story short, we started our first rainwater grant project, a gentleman who's since passed approached us about the Sheriff's Posse grounds in Parker County. We built a large, we funded a large rainwater project there. We've sent, then we followed up with a similar project in Wise County. Last year we opened up a, or the board adopted an annual rainwater harvesting grant program. We issued some, some grants last year or this current year, and in October, we're gonna be opening up applications for the next round. Primarily focused at political subdivisions of the state, counties, schools, cities. So if any of you guys have any, if there are any county facilities, they don't have to be new. If they, if they're already gutted, that's great. To, to install some of this rainwater collection, for example, the, the two facilities, the Sheriff's Posse and the Wise County Fairgrounds, they've got sixty-five thousand gallon storage tanks. In Parker, in the Parker County, they use rainwater to water all the animals for the county show. It's a great teaching tool. And it's, it takes, it takes a huge stress off the aquifer, right? When, and, and one of the things is teaching folks, you can catch, Texas, we're blessed in Texas. Some states don't allow people to catch the rainwater off their roof. Colorado doesn't, for example. Texas, it's your water, right? It's basically your water. From all the way up to the sky, all the way up to the heavens, until it hits the ground, as it sheets across your property, it's your, it's your water, unless it hits a water course, then it's, then it's not your water anymore. But you can catch the water off your roof. You can catch a tremendous amount even off a typical house, but off large buildings, large structures, you can catch a lot of water. And storing that water and using it to offset out, outside water use is a great thing. You can even make, make it potable. Both of those two, they actually have filtration systems that make the water potable. The thinking was, I know, I was a four H FFA kid, man, you drink out of a water hose. So they had to make sure those, that, that water coming out wasn't gonna make the kids sick. So, so they are filtered and it is potable water coming out of those. So I just wanted to let you guys know if the county has any facilities that, that you think would be good for this, please contact our office. It's a fairly simple application. And I tell people all the time, if you don't get grant funding the first time, keep applying. This is gonna be something we do every year. My goal is to have, by the time I retire, I would like to have our big, some of these big rainwater projects at every county facility, something at every school, something at all the city facilities in the district, just because I think it's a great teaching tool. And especially as you move west and we get to an area where groundwater is less and less, you know, I know out where Jared lives, there's not much in Lipan. As we get, it, it's a very possibly reliable source during most years of water, if you have enough storage, that is.
Where do they get the application form?
The application forms, you can get on our website. Jill, who's heads up our outreach and education stuff, she's got a, a nice little page on our website that you can find the application. We'll send out a notification. Or you can call our office and we'll just email it to you guys.
You said it starts October first?
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're, we're gonna start, October through February. So we have a, a big application window. Because the thinking is, a lot of folks have questions, because we require some supplemental information as well, you know, we need to know what the designs of it and, and then usually we'll get the applications in. March, we'll, we'll do an initial, we have a really clear ranking, right? We've gone through and said, there's a clear matrix. This is how we're gonna score these, so it's, it's fair and it's open up front. And we'll go through, do an initial scoring. I'll meet with a committee of my board and we'll select usually the top so many. We'll bring them in for interviews and then there's a additional, like twenty-five points that you can get for the interview process. And then we'll make a selection.
I'm glad you got to meet Warner Sidel this morning, because, you know, with our ag extension, because I think the two of y'all could work together and, and get something really great going.
Right.
With this rainwater.
You know, we've actually have a, here in a few weeks, every, every other year, we partner with, it's actually Texas Well Owner Network, which is part of AgriLife, and they use, utilize a lot of the county extension folks. Texas Well Owner Networks comes up and they do cheap testing, you know, bacterial test and physical properties, TDS, stuff like that for folks' wells. And I do, we do a little like two-hour presentation. So we partner with the extension and we'll be down here. Again, I think it's the last week of September that we'll be putting on that event here in, in Hood County.
I was following you all along here, but what was this thing? What is rain? I don't understand what you're talking about. What is that?
I, I think there was some falling out of the sky last night.
It was.
I, I wasn't sure. It'd been so long since I'd seen it. I was a little confused by what was happening.
Yeah.
Now, like, there's wet stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was wet stuff.
I promise it, it will start raining again at some point in time.
And then we're gonna say, when will it quit raining?
Right. Every, I, I, I think every major drought, like, that we know of in recorded Texas history has basically been broken by a flood. I go back to Memorial Day, two thousand and fifteen, right? We've gone through those years of drought and then every lake in the state filled up over the weekend.
Yep. That's, seems like that's how it happened.
Thank you very much. Yep. That's all I got, guys.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Or maybe one or two, maybe two. So you mentioned that they, this past year, they drilled thirteen hundred wells in Parker County.
Yes, sir.
And we, we double, you said we historically have been doing about seventy a year?
Between fifty to seventy.
And now we're up, up to maybe one forty.
Correct.
Which is a very, which is still a small percentage of what's going on up there.
Correct.
Now, the Upper Trinity groundwater, or the Upper Trinity goes, it doesn't stop at the end of Hood County line, right?
No, sir.
And it, in fact, it goes all the way up through Montague and then north of there, right?
Yes, sir.
So is the spacing requirement in Parker County, two acres like it is here?
Yes, sir.
Because that's y'all's rules, two acre spacing.
Yes, sir.
Are you finding now that Parker County is starting to, I mean, that's a lot of wells to drill, but are you seeing a trend to them having, doing more muds where they can put more dense, more density per acre of houses?
You know, on the, yes and no, Commissioner, and, and this is part of the ongoing problem, right? Is on the east side of the, the county, we are starting to see a little bit more of that. We, we're kind of blessed and cursed. We, we're kind of blessed and cursed because the groundwater resources blow us. We set on top of a major aquifer, but we're setting on top of the outcrop of it, where it's coming up close to the surface, it's shallow, it's not as deep and thick, you know? So when you set up your muds, you've got to have a lot of water from, you know, a few wells. You know, the biggest wells in, in our district, the, the most productive wells in our district are on the east side of Wise County, 120, 140 gallons a minute, some get up close to 200 gallons a minute. There's a couple in Hood County that might make right around 100 gallons a minute. You go a set of counties east, you get into like Denton County, over the east side of Tarrant County, you make 500, 600, there's wells east of Denton County that make 1,000 gallons a minute in the Trinity, but they're, you know, what, 1,400, 1,500 foot deep, 2,000 foot deep?
I'm going to add 3,600.
Yeah. And, and so, we're blessed because we can drill an affordable well, you know, at 300, 350 feet, 200 feet, you know, in this area, but you're not going to make all of that gallons per minute to support the muds. So in other words, to get that dense development like you're talking about, you, you pretty much have to have a surface water resource. Which in Hood County, because you've got Granbury and around Granbury, you know, A-mud's transitioning towards more water from the lake, you know, because production from their wells has fallen off over the last several decades. But as you get into Parker County, there's, especially in the western half of the county, access to surface water is, is minimal.
So I remember having discussions with Mr. Lusk, you know, he had, and I don't know if y'all, I haven't had a chance really to talk to him in depth about this lately, but have you had a chance, Mr. Lusk, to look into, you know, you were talking to me about a, a series of ponds and lakes to, a project to look into that for helping to recharge? Is that something that's, you've had a chance to get going yet, or?
No, that's on the top of my mind, but not at the top of the agenda.
Okay.
So, we're going to discuss more of that, however, it's, it's percolating in my mind.
Okay. Because this aquifer is not like, like the Edwards Aquifer, I, I was down in San Antonio for many years, and if it rained, the Edwards Aquifer filled right up, because it's like a big tank.
It's, it's.
And they had divers, they had, actually had divers over in San Marcos, they, they, you know, you, they had put film footage of them looking at the level of the aquifer. That's not like this aquifer here, though, right?
Correct. So, you're right, the Edwards, and actually the Trinity, once you get below the Colorado River, you know, it turns into karst, which is caves, cracks, full of water. No, that, those are very unique. Most aquifers are like we're talking about up here, which are sand-based, primarily sand, right? It's, it's saturated sands. And so, you know, most, the best available science says that, you know, it's something like 1% of rainfall makes it into the subsurface, and of that 1%, like 75, 80% of that is then lost through evapotranspiration, it never makes it past the root zone. So think of it this way, the root, root zone's got to be saturated, water has to, then water can pass through the root zone and into the deeper subsurface. I mean, just think of like, if you, if you've got a sponge and you start dripping water on it, that sponge has to saturate and then it'll start dripping out the bottom. And so, times like this, when the, the root zone is completely dry, it's going to take a good bit of rain to saturate that before water can pass through. So in some years, you might get a little recharge, but it's, what, what's happening to most aquifers in the state, like, like, you know, the Trinity that we're dealing with here, is, we refer to it as mining, right? We're, we're mining the aquifer, we're taking out on an annual basis exponentially more than is going back in. There's a ton of water down there, and that's, that's what's the saving grace, right, this, because there's so much water down there. But it's also almost physically impossible to pump all of the water out of the aquifer. What happens is water levels fall, production from wells goes from, you know, you may have a, a typical well at your house, you may have, you know, 15, 20 gallons a minute, fall off to 12 gallons a minute, fall off to 10 gallons a minute over time as water levels fall, or not even as water levels fall, but as there's more stress on the aquifer, as more wells are drilled and the water's trying to move in the sand towards pumping centers, it, it puts stress on the aquifer, which impacts the, the productivity of wells.
And you can't recharge it fast enough to compensate for nearly what's being pumped out.
Right. Correct.
And aquifers, they're not level.
Right.
They sit like that. So this water here, like up in Montague County, you know, and Granbury's right here, and Tarrant County's right here.
Yeah. It dips, gets deeper and thicker as you go, as you move south and east.
So going back to your first discussion on the requirements for Senate Bill 2440.
Yes, ma'am.
We should just reach out to you and you want us to have a couple of people schedule some time with you to discuss how we're going to implement that.
That'd be great. What I, what I, I mean, again, it's to you guys, what, what I would recommend, what I, what I would like, is if you guys could provide me a couple of names, right? Obviously, keep it under a quorum, you know, a couple of you guys, maybe if y'all have staff that want to, that want to work on this, then I would send out some dates to those folks and try to get, you know, two or three folks from each of our four counties, come perhaps have a, a set down, you know, a couple of meetings with me and my staff, we could hammer out something, then come back to the full court. Because what I would like, you know, if, 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 if the court so chooses, would be to have an interlocal agreement that basically says, and that way, when folks, when developers come to you guys or come to y'all's staff and say, hey, I've got this property, I'm going to look to, to, to plot it and subdivide it, then, just a, an extra step, is y'all say, okay, here are all the things you have to do, and by the way, contact Upper Trinity, they're going to walk you through the groundwater study portion of this.
I would just, I mean, we're not throwing out names, but it seems to me that the likely person would be Mr. Head, since he's responsible for development as well as the flood plan, planning.
Right. And I didn't know if y'all would want maybe a, a member of the court on there.
Yeah, this commissioner wants to be part of that.
Yeah.
I've been, I've been intricately involved in this since I got in office five years ago.
So, so if you guys, however y'all want to, send me some names, and then I'll, I'll start reaching out and try to schedule some, some meetings.
All right. Just wanted, I didn't want to get, you gave us so much good information, I didn't want to lose the sight that you were at, you had an ask.
Yes, ma'am.
And the ask was to give you some names.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
Good job. Good job, thank you. You got anything to add, Mr. Reynolds?
Do you want him to add anything?
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number 19, discuss and take appropriate action regarding check received from Vista Corporation amount of $50,000, the treasurer.
Yes, I'm just going to make a recommendation, we might need a bathroom break every now and then. Every now and then. We received a $50,000 check from Vista Corporation, from Jay Webster. It says the money pertaining to the donation agreement letter is for emergency management planning. We have GL 101, 3,75510. So I don't have the agreement, the check's clearly made out to emergency management. So, there we go.
I've been donating this money for a long time.
I just remembered the one from last year, which was the one that we actually gave to animal control. You brought them in, we had a big cardboard check for them, did a big presentation, but that's the last one I remember.
And this is for emergency management?
This is what the check says, and that's what Jay, Jay currently works with Vista Corp and says that it's pertaining to the donation agreement letter for emergency management planning.
Well, that's who we work with, I mean, when they come down here, it's emergency management and office that works with FEMA down here, and that's where they want to go, that's where the nuclear, Vista is the nuclear plant for everybody out there, so.
But like I said, last year, the money was donated to animal control.
Yeah.
But this year, he specifically designated it to go to.
And the checks, the check reads Hood County Emergency Management.
I think that's perfect.
Well, I think we should follow that. I, I just got a check yesterday by mistake.
I bet you did.
But it was made payable to the Hood County judge.
Yes.
For $866,000, and I thought that was very generous. Do you want to deposit that in my account?
That would be illegal.
No, no, okay. No, but I think that's where it should be, that's, was the condition of that check, so.
Yes.
You want?
So it goes into GL 101, 3,75510, if you want to keep track of that.
And it's budgeted there also.
Okay.
3,700, what, 3,75510.
So do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve and accept the check from Vista Corporation in the amount of $50,000 for emergency management.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to accept the check from Vista Corporation amount of $50,000 to, made payable to the Office of Emergency Management into our emergency management account, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. It carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we get to the consent agenda.
I make a motion, we take five minutes.
Okay.
Deferring to our treasurer.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Or maybe 10.
Couple of minutes before 12, we're going back into session, and we're back to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
If I move that we approve the consent agenda as stated.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, next is road ops, we don't have any names, so now we got, we got Mr. Donald Lenny going to take over for development, as Clint Head is in school, and am I right on that?
That's correct, Your Honor.
Okay. So the first one is discuss and consider allowing the final plat of Homestead Acres that was approved by Parker County, according to the interlocal agreement, to be recorded with the plat records in the county clerk's office, precinct one. Yes, sir.
Judge, Commissioners, this was approved in, in Parker County, and it was an interlocal agreement that the Commissioners Court approved on, on July 25th of this year, that, what they're simply asking is to come back and allow the judge to, to sign this plat to be filed in, in Hood County. It is located in precinct one, just north of Lipan, where the Parker, Hood County line is.
Yeah, there's no infrastructure or anything on this, it's basically backyards that cross the county line into, into Hood County, so. I, I make a motion that we approve the final plat of Homestead Acres, approved by Parker County, according to the interlocal agreement, to be recorded with the plat records in the county clerk's office.
Second.
A motion been made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the final plat of Homestead Acres.
Andrews.
I mean, Commissioner Andrews, second, to approve the interlocal agreement with Parker County, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0. Next, public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of the tradition at Port Ridgely lots. So at this time, at straight up noon, we're going to adjourn into a public hearing. So, what you got?
Judge, this replat that is, was submitted by the developer, and it's splitting up lot AR dash one into two lots, that would be known as AR one, AR dash one A and AR dash one B. AR dash one B is, is actually a 25, 20-foot wide drainage easement that goes down to the lake and to a fishing pier. This would be something for all the residents in that development to, to be able to use to get down to the, to the lake, is what it is. The property is located within the Water Quality District in Precinct Three and is served by A-mud water and sewer. Staff has reviewed this plat and recommends approval of the tradition of Port Ridgely lots, AR one A, AR one B.
Okay. Does, we have any questions, discussion, comments? If not, at 12:02, we're going to adjourn back into Commissioners Court here, and do I hear a motion?
If I move that we approve the replat of traditions at Port Ridgely lots A, there's R one A and A dash R one B.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Our motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the replat of the tradition at Port Ridgely lots AR one A and AR one B, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries 5-0. And at this time, we'll adjourn back at 12:03 into a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of Port Ridgely East Section Two.
Judge, Commissioners, this replat's up for your consideration, it's, it's a common lot line between 178 and 179. There had been an encroachment by one to the other, they're simply moving the lot line over, not affecting the regulations whatsoever, made one a little bit larger than the other one. The, the one that's taken away from is still larger than the one that got it, so. The, the property is located in the Water Quality District, Precinct Three, this one is also served by A-mud water and sewer. Staff has reviewed this, this replat and makes a recommendation to approve this replat as presented.
Anybody have any questions, comments, discussion? If not, at 12:04, we're going to adjourn back into a Commissioners Court hearing, do I hear a motion?
If I move that we approve the replat of Port Ridgely East Section Two, lots seven, 178A and 179A.
Second. A motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the replat of Port Ridgely East Section Two, lots seven, 117, 178A and 179A, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0. Next, at 12:05, we're going to adjourn into a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of Roadstone Estates, Phase One. Mr. Lenny.
Judge, this one involves relocation of a cul-de-sac. At the beginning, at the, the approval of this, it was off Freedom Court and actually where the two come together, Freedom and, and Gospel, it went a little bit further and then went to a cul-de-sac. All they simply did was bring that cul-de-sac back in what we call a knuckle, that's part of that intersection. And in doing so, they've had to move the, the drainage easement that come off that cul-de-sac, move it back down, and then they took the three lots that were involved with this, three, four, and five, and then made two lots out of it. Lots being four R is, is now at 6.41 acres, and lot three R is 5.20 acres. So they've reduced the, the lots and then relocated that, that cul-de-sac. The engineer, that we did contact their engineer, and they provided certification that there's no adverse drainage effect by moving this, it stayed the same. Property is located in Precinct One in the rural district and is served by on-site wells and sewage facilities. Staff has reviewed this replat and recommends approval of the replat of Roadstone Estates as presented.
Okay. Any questions, comments, any further discussion? Okay, at this time, at 12:06, we convene back into Commissioners Court, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I make a motion to approve the replat of Roadstone Estates, Phase One, lots, lots three R and four R.
A motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the replat of the Roadstone Estates, Phase One, lots three R and four R, seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Lenny. Okay, financial, Ms. Becky Kidd.
Judge, Commissioners, today for your expenditures, your amount is 899,557.85. The auditor's office has reviewed these invoices and we do recommend payment. You've also been given a list that's on the screen of payments over $10,000. Are there any questions on anything?
If not, do I hear a motion to approve the payment of the bills?
If I move that we approve the payment of the bills for August 16, 2023 through September 5, 2023, in the amount of $899,557.85.
Second. A motion made by Commissioner Wilson to pay the bills from August 16, 2023 to September